Hear me, Molly? In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been given by posting notice on the door of the school administration offices, 200 Lees Avenue, on the 16th of March, and notice has continued to be posted. And we provided notice to the Courier Post on the 16th of March. We were too late for the retrospect. And filing a notice with the clerk at the Borough of Oakland on the 16th of March. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education in the Borough of Oakland in the county of Camden. And it's called in pursuit of NJSA 18A 10-3 to hold another reorganization meeting to elect a president. Amy Ezekiel?
Here.
Mrs. Valpelle?
Here.
Mrs. Butchko?
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Like the call for pledge allegiance and the flag is back. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is strong, one nation, without borders. I'm going to move the committee of the whole to after we elect a new president, the way they can preside over it. So with that, I'm going to request nominations at this time from members of the board for the office of the President of the Oakland Board of Education.
I nominate Denise Butchko.
I nominate Todd Schaefer.
Are there any other nominations? Do both parties accept nominations?
Yes.
Okay, so I've had this one other time in my career, so we actually have to do a ballot, so bear with me. Good thing I pulled the bylaws the other day. Okay. So in a case where we have two nominations for the same seat, voting shall take place via written ballot. So I'm going to pass everybody a piece of paper, and I'm going to ask everybody to write the name of the board member they wish to vote for president. And ballots also require that the board member need to print and sign your name on the ballot. And then I'll read the results into the record. Okay? All right, here we go. Mr. Tabey voted for Mrs. Butchko. Mrs. Valpelle voted for Mr. Schaefer. Mrs. Marmian voted for Mrs. Butchko. Mr. Stotts voted for Mrs. Butchko. Todd Schaefer voted for Todd Schaefer. Back in the day when we had our own elections and, you know, we had to do the polls and we would get the results, people would literally type in, you probably know, like they would type in Mickey Mouse and all kinds of crazy names. Mrs. Rotondo voted for Mr. Schaefer. Mr. McMillan voted for Mrs. Butchko. It's neck and neck, guys. Drama. Mrs. Ezekiel voted for Mr. Schaefer. Mrs. Butchko voted for Mrs. Butchko. So by a vote of five to four, Mrs. Butchko, you are hereby elected Oakland President of the Board of Education. So congratulations. You don't know what fun you're going to have with me. And if you'd like, you can come take your seat and gavel if you'd like. And of course, we don't have to vote for a vice president. I just threw that on there in case we needed to do it, so. Sorry. I spread. You'll get used to it. Committee of the whole, yeah.
All right, so we now have a motion to go into committee of the whole.
Second.
Who's in second? Does anyone have any topics to bring to the committee of the whole at this time?
How about the budget?
Let's start.
Sure.
Yep.
I got a couple of emails from, at the end this afternoon, or this morning, maybe, I don't know. I had new carpets put in today, and I haven't had access to my computer until about 5:00 this afternoon, so I didn't look at them, other than quickly to glance at them. But I go back to the questions that I had asked previously. I don't see 35 additional kids. And I know Baden did send some numbers around, but we don't have an additional 35 kids. According to the reports that we get every month from the principal that says, I forget what it says, population, principal's report includes the student count. If you go from those, we have not gotten 35 more students.
State aid. Can I answer your question one at a time? Can I answer?
Go ahead.
There are 38 additional children in Collingswood High School that are residents of Oakland that are in the tuition counts. So we count when I do it in October. We send it to the state. Obviously, that's how you got your funding. And then when we set the tuition rates for high school, we have 100 and, excuse me, I believe it's 135 children attending Collingswood High School from Oakland in next year's budget. And that's an increase of, last year was 97.
Did anybody, I'm sorry, I ran out. I've got the wrong pile of papers. Does anybody have the numbers I put in?
I can probably pull them up. Was it in our email thread?
I'm sorry, say again.
Was it in our email thread that we have going? You sent them, yeah, you sent.
He's frantically searching for that. The end result is, if you go by the principal's report, we don't have those kids. And if we don't have those kids, we're not paying tuition for them. Two of the kids are choice students, going from eighth grade to, I'm sorry, going from fifth grade to sixth grade. Those two choice students become Collingswood students, so we don't pay tuition on them.
And you're not being charged for this?
Okay, well, I would assume at the end of the year we're not. That's not my question at this point.
No, you're not.
My question is, where are these kids? Where are the 35 students?
I can't, I don't do the principal's report, so I can't speak for something I don't do. But I know when we counted the number of, when I calculate the number of children to include in your tuition calculation, which I explained to everybody in an email earlier today, I take your eighth graders, I move them up. And we all agreed over the summer when we were negotiating moving the ninth graders out of the middle school rate to the high school, that there was a dozen more kids that moved in since May. So half of your children are the kids that we argued over during the summer that actually do exist. But we moved the eighth graders to ninth grade. Then I count all the kids that are sitting in Collingswood High School in Genesis, and I use the Oakland resident code, which is the same way Oakland does it. We have the same student database. And I back out your 12th graders. And choice and charter children are not included in that number. And that was 135, so that is what is included in the budget.
So the principal report for February shows 136 in terms of grades nine through 12.
Nine through 12?
Mm-hmm. 136 students.
And what does the middle school show?
It was about 105 when I counted them.
I'm sorry?
It was about 105 when I counted them in October for the state aid, but I don't know what they are right now. But again, that amount's going to be flat for five years.
Middle school shows 86.
So 86 and 136 are 212.
222.
222, okay. And that's 35 more than we have this year?
For high school.
No, no, in total. Tuition for high school and middle school are about the same.
Yes, in total, there's 38 more children. Again, the middle school, that rate is, regardless of how many kids come in and come out, is the flat dollar amount. It's the high school rate, but you're going to see a jump because of the number of ninth graders, because ninth graders moving over to high school.
I agree.
I just want to clarify, so the additional students we're seeing is because, which is something Bill is worried about, that the ninth graders are now under the high school tuition rate and not the middle school tuition rate. Is that correct? That's, sorry. So I just want to clarify, and I feel, Bill has definitely brought this issue up before, is the additional numbers we're seeing for the high school tuition because ninth graders in general are no longer included in that middle school tuition rate, and now they're in the high school rate?
Yes, 100%. Which is why you saw the number of the middle school, like.
But at the same time, now, the new figure for the middle school, we no longer have that $1.5 million deal. So the middle school tuition anticipated was $1,400 and something, which is significantly more than it was, but it's based on the number of students that we were projecting to go forward at that point in time.
Right.
Which were 86?
Yes. And again, it's, if you're paying the flat dollar amount, so if 100 show up, it's the same dollar amount. The only time there's a tuition adjustment is with high school, because that's how the middle school tuition contract was structured. It's a flat dollar amount. So if 100 show up, 100 go. But we set the dollar amount based on the kids that were in attendance. I guess I worked on it over the summer.
Okay. I'm obviously completely wrong, so have at it, guys. Whatever you think's appropriate. Seems strange, though. We've got $552,000 in additional state aid, and we have to increase at the same time the tax rate by 7%? What a coincidence. I'm sorry.
Well, with all due respect, your tuition, and I did send the line item detail to everybody, so you can see it for yourself, your tuition obligation's increased by $900,000 in this budget. If you don't want to increase it by 7%, that's up to you, but just, I would need guidance on where this board feels you would like to take the reductions from. But between last year and this year, between the added district placements and the increased tuition at Collingswood, your tuition costs for Oakland did go up by 900. Now, I forgot the exact number. It was like 900 and some odd thousand dollars. But again, it's because you do have, you got state aid because the state recognizes that there's an increased number of children in Oakland that were responsible for educating.
So me and Todd were just chatting, and like, I think, you know, I brought up the 7%. It seems, it's a large number for me, like, looking at it overall. And I'm sure it's a large number for all the community. It's really close to 10%, and that's a double-digit number, and that's kind of where I got hesitant. But me and Todd were just talking about how it's been proposed to us as that's the option. We don't have any other options. Like, we need another, and I'm not asking you to put like 15 things up on a board saying, like, these are your options, but like, we don't have another option. It's like 7% or what? So that's where we're at.
Or, again, there are things in the budget we cannot do. There's capital work scheduled. We just won't do it. But I, when, again, this was the budget to go to the state for review and approval. I had like less than a week to spit it out. We can change it up until the public hearing, but I, as your business minister, business administrator, I'm very reluctant to cut services to children in the areas of tuition and special ed tuition and services because those costs, I mean, we just sort of, people move in, and once that, you know, I have to have the money to pay for those things. So I'm very reluctant to play with that. But the things we can do, we have budgeted for the paving in the back. I think it was like $38,000. That'll shave probably a percentage and a half off. I mean, there are things that are scheduled to be done for maintenance purposes that we could just not do that could bring that dollar down. But what's in the budget is basically everything we need to do, including, you know, your staff, you've got all, you know, you've got your Chromebooks, your tuition is vibrant, and, you know, you're paying for your needs and you're maintaining your facility. So, I mean, there are options, but the first thing would be either we don't do the things that we've scheduled to do, or we've done like we've done in the past and we pay for them out of our reserve accounts, which I didn't take it out of reserve because we didn't need to, because we did get the additional state aid. So that's why I didn't take it out of reserve. Off the top of my head, that would be an option that I would provide for you.
So I know it's tough to probably speculate because it would determine what maybe, if we were to make some cuts maintenance-wise, what they would be, but are you, if we had to speculate, would you say maybe that would shave off a couple percentages, like from seven to five? If we, if we cut some of maybe the maintenance?
Well, I know some of the board members threw around over the weekend that to go to 4%. If, to get to that, we would have to cut about $160,000, $166,000. Not doing the paving is not $166,000. It's about $38,000, $40,000. So I would need probably another.
That would be roughly the dollar amount if we're looking at shaving two to three.
Right. If you wanted to go to four, you're looking at $160,000 to get to that number.
At some point, did we, calculating 7% of the real estate taxes in Oakland, how much does that total?
It's $149 per average home.
So I definitely support just seeing, I mean, this is kind of the first time that I remember as a board member seeing such an increase in the tuition and the enrollment, all really good things. I do not advocate for cutting any services to the staff or the students. But I think that's a good point. In the past, like, I remember, I want to say it was 2021, we had a choice to do the generator or not, to buy the generator, like, that kind of thing. And I know that's additional work, but I would personally advocate to see just, I mean, even if it was 2% less, just to make those kind of choices. Also, the point being that this isn't going to change next year, so I just want to make that point, too. I'm not smart enough to know exactly what that means, like, how we start to think about things in the future, but I can only see an increase in people coming in. I don't think people are going to be leaving in droves. So just, I'm just putting that out there as we can put a Band-Aid on today, but it's also our job to think ahead as a group, so.
That's one of my concerns as well. Actually, just, we actually have a large increase in middle school. And so I'm looking ahead to when those, this current fifth grade class is moving to ninth grade, what is that going to look like then? And I don't want to go up by 7% now and then not be able to have it increased then. So that's where I am at. I'm not comfortable with the 7%. So I would advocate looking at some of the other things that are listed as the cost drivers, just, and just to get a more thorough explanation of what it includes. Like, there's an increase in general supplies, that sort of thing that I'd like to go by.
And the supply, and I did get everybody's emails, the supplies, the biggest jump in the supply line is your Chromebooks. We really haven't purchased Chromebooks in a couple of years, so we do need to replace them, so.
May I, may I interrupt? Could we explore other options, like the 501(c)(3) Oakland Education Foundation? That, I mean, I'd love to look at budgets and also review the almost $10,000 that's been raised since 2020 from that fund. I mean, if that would bring the tax dollar down for our residents, and we've done that work and done that, you know, the, OEF did that work.
We had mentioned that last week, or last month, when, after the OEF meeting, but also, didn't we order, like, an astronomical amount of Chromebooks at the beginning of COVID, which was only three years ago?
We did, but they don't last in, you know, they're not.
But we've also talked about.
You got to carry, like, you got to, like, treat them like gold.
I'm aware, but like, I think OEF also was willing to use some of that money for repairing Chromebooks and stuff as well.
And I think we were looking originally, I think, and I'll speak for Mrs. Bolden, but she was looking for, I'm trying to find my tech guy. Is it the cards or the screens? Yeah. And we haven't been able to find them. Because I know, like, when Adam asked, he was like, what do you really want? She goes, my teachers love these, we need these. We haven't been able to get them. So, yeah.
I just want to say, and I'm probably the lone dissent here on this one, but $149 per year is $13 a month. 7% sounds a lot worse, but if you're, if you're looking at things, you want to, what, overall, where are you looking to, are you going to be saving $13 a month for everybody, but not providing what would really be best for the kids to maintain and keep growing? Or that's?
So there's a lot of apartments in Oakland as well, right? So like, I think that number, I mean, I was just going through random places on Oakland's website today through tax codes, and I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not putting anybody on either side, but I feel like that number's very low, and I think that number's probably skewed because of the apartments and versus population, because I know a single home isn't going to be that number. That's, you know, so, you know, the powers of averages. So if you have one apartment complex that has 250 apartments, and then on that same flat of land, you have two houses, it's a big difference. So it's not, 149 is like, I think, kind of, yeah, for sure.
And that's on an average assessment, I believe, of 165, which I think is pretty low. And we all know that it's going to be higher than that in reality.
But there's published data that says that the median tax, property tax rate in 2021 for Oakland was $7,747. And if you determine 7% of that, it's close to $550.
So it's 7% of half of that. It's not 7% of that.
We're not, we're not all that bill. That bill's county and town. We're about 50% of that bill.
Yeah, I had that same question in the email.
Yeah.
And it's only the, only the school-related portion of the tax bill, which is still about 52% or 53%?
It's still 70.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, and also, and because we have a borough council member here, the borough council, as I read in the retrospect, taxes are increasing by 7% as well. Do I have that correct? No? I stand corrected. Thank you, sir. But it increases and increases. And I'll also make the point that, of course, there's a lot of people in our town, where there are people in our town who are on fixed income, so besides the fact that our economy is really challenging right now. So, again, I'd advocate for looking for cuts to the budget that would not affect services to students.
My only concern is I want to make sure we don't go backwards. That's it. That's because I was here when we were on the brink of falling over. I don't want to see that again. And so that's, that's the only reason I say, like, looking at big picture, because I don't want us to go back to that.
I wasn't involved with the school board when this school was potentially talking about closing, but, and I didn't even have kids in the school. I don't even think I had kids at the time, and I was, like, heartbroken over the fact of the community could potentially lose the school. So I, yeah, I definitely don't want to go backwards at all. I just want options that may be not as big of a step, but just a little step further.
I'm new here, so what percentage did the tuition go up year over year?
Well, this year, it was in a very unusual year. Give me a second, I will pull out that. This year, um... This year, it went up 31%. And that's the kids to Collingswood and some added district placements. But yeah, went up 30%.
Because of the population or because of what we're being charged? Like, did the rate itself per student go up?
The rate only went up 2%.
That's, okay, that was my.
Yeah, yeah. What I do in Collingswood, there's like a whole process, but the state certifies how much it costs per pupil every year after my audit's done. And then when the state software is made available, the state software will calculate, like, a dollar amount I can charge up to. I typically do 2% off of the certified rate, because the charge up to is like if I'm spending 100% on my budget, which we all know I will never do, because that's just bad fiscal. But I like to look at the two numbers to make sure that they're not too far apart. And this year, they were only, they were apart by only like a couple hundred dollars. So typically, when I do with, when I show that the Collingswood board, they have a few years of data in front of them, and they normally put 2%, 2% over the prior year. And that's to avoid huge tuition adjustments also. Because I think back when I got here back in the day, I think there was a huge tuition adjustment to Oakland and a huge tuition adjustment to Woodland. So we actually look at tuition very, it takes a very long time to set tuition at Collingswood because I don't want to have another situation where there's a large tuition adjustment where towns owe each other like hundreds of thousands of dollars, because that's, that's not fun.
Baden, is the tuition for the middle school about $14,000 and change?
Excuse me?
Yeah, the tuition rate, correct.
Hold on a second. Yeah, it wasn't one of my emails.
Yeah, I have it right here.
You got it in front of you?
$14,570, and then certified at $14,871.
Yeah, the rate to be, yeah, the rate to be charged next year is 15, 292.
15, 292.
Yeah. And high school's 15, 871.
If I multiply that 15, 292 times 86 students, off the top of my head, I don't know what I come out with, but I think it's going to be less than $1,400,000. And if I were to calculate it, it's going to tell us.
1.315.
1.315, so we're locked in at $1,400,000, so we've already, we're already paying back Collingswood additional money that we're not going to be able to recover.
But then the next year would be the opposite.
Right, which is why we agreed in the middle school to not do the annual adjustments like we do with high school, because we don't, we don't know what's going to happen.
So the 2% going up per student, that was for the high school? Because middle school, I'm calculating 5%. Is that correct?
The high school. Middle school, back in the day, again, Oakland was a K to nine, so when the middle school split off, the first tuition agreement was grade six to nine. So for the first five years of that agreement, the high schoolers were actually in with the middle school tuition rate at a flat rate. So they weren't being charged the full high school rate. So this year, when we renegotiated with the ninth graders with the high school, and we did the, just the middle schoolers with the middle schoolers, and, but we kept the amount for the middle school flat, like we did in the past.
Okay, one last thing, and then I'll turn my mic off. Okay, one last thing, and then I'll turn my mic off. Uh, we're, we're discussing the, the tax rate, which, which is appropriate, because that's what, uh, everybody here is going to be concerned about. But it completely ignores the fact that we did get another $552,000 in state aid, which is kind of a gift, uh, from, from our friend, the governor. And I just lost my train of thought on what, oh, the, the, it's only $13 a month for, it's only $149 a year, but you pay that every single year. You'll pay that next year, and the year after, and the year after, in addition to whatever goes up next year. So it, it's not like it's a one-shot deal. So keep that in mind if you would. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything on the budget?
I guess where, where are we leaving off with this?
That's my question. So I guess the question is, so we had discussed 4%, but I don't know if other members of the board are comfortable. So generally, we do 2% because that's all we're allowed to do. So the state, I guess, gave us the ability to tax more because of the increase in enrollment and tuition costs. So is 4% agreeable? If we are able to cut enough?
I want to see what you have to cut.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we said, what, about 166,000 or, so, yeah, if we, yeah, let's see what that would look like. What kind of cuts are we talking about that would be around that dollar amount? And then see if those are cuts that were agreeable to, or, like, to Teresa's point, if they are looking at services, then those are things we're not going to want to cut, but.
Those are also things, sorry to interrupt, that we won't get back. To Bill's point, we're not going to say, oh, next year, let's bring this back. I mean, let's, in reality, because that would just be an additional increase.
So ju, so just so that I'm clear, um, from, from, from our perspective, we will work on, uh, getting some scenarios to get to the board, uh, within the next, uh, what's the realistic timeframe, Bethan?
Next week?
Early, early next week, um, for the board to be able to kind of deliberate and give us some direction, because we will need to know that information before our committee meetings for the April session, so that we can have everything laid out for you, for you guys, uh, for that final vote and that final approval in April.
How will those scenarios be delivered? Via email?
Yeah, I'll probably send an email to the entire board. I just request that you don't email all back and forth. Just take the information in, and then any questions you have, probably direct them to your committee chair, who can then ask me.
But we can still discuss in committee.
Right, I just want to get you the information in advance, and if there's any follow-up questions you have, I can get you the information.
Okay, great, thank you. And sorry to make you have to work harder.
It's okay.
I'm not sure, actually, if this is a committee of the whole topic or a public comment. But can I just mention a communication hiccup that we've had recently with middle school? So we just discovered, uh, last night, um, parents of 6th grade students from Oakland specifically, that we were not receiving text messages from the school because when the, um, Genesis rollover happened last summer, only our, um, home phone numbers transferred over, not our cell phone numbers. And so we didn't know that we were missing this information, because we talked to each other, who are all fellow Oakland parents, and didn't know that there were messages going out that we weren't receiving. I kind of figured it out last night based on a comment I saw on Facebook, and then the, um, middle school secretary did some digging and figured it out. And so hopefully, it will be fixed moving forward, but all Oakland parents of at least 6th graders, I don't know if 7th or 8th graders were affected or not, um, need to go into Genesis and add their cell phone numbers in there so that they receive messages. But it was one of those things where we didn't know what we were missing, because we didn't know that it was going out. So I just wanted to make you particularly aware of it and other parents moving forward, and hopefully, um, in the future, it won't happen, um, so that new 6th grade parents will get all the information that the other 6th grade parents are also getting. But, um, particularly for students moving over out of district into Collingswood, Oakland, Woodland, there seemed to be some sort of hiccup with the software that was stopping us from getting some important messages. So I just wanted to share that.
If I may, as the Chair of the School Community Relations and Policy, I hope I got that correct, sorry. Um, I wonder about, you know, the Woodland and Oakland transition to 6th and 9th grade. If there's, I mean, obviously, that, that's a moment that happens for local families. Could our committee be in some kind of contact with the transition team from 5th to 6th? And if so, could we be helpful in any way? It's just a question I put out there, maybe we can discuss it committee. But, um, you know, we see from friends that there's, you know, a meeting for parents. We could be helpful in broadcasting that, you know, it's just to, to get people more on, on the same page so that we become a community before the kids actually walk in for day one.
All right, is there a motion to come out of committee of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
Our public comments section. So if anyone has anything to bring to the board at this time, please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Monique, it's 103 Johnson Avenue, Oakland. I'm listening to you folks discuss the budget. We just passed our first reading of the budget, the municipal budget. And it takes a lot of effort, I agree. But how do you know the amount of students that are coming in versus how many are leaving? Do you have a fixed amount on that, or is it just a guess?
Oh, it's not a guess. Every month, the principal and her report, she does a, a report on enrollment. And then every fall, the way state aid is figured, every October 15th of every school year, we have to count every child, every resident child in Oakland, whether they attend Collingswood or wherever they attend, we have to count them. And that is how state aid is, is derived. And then at the end of the year, we also send them our average daily attendance and our average daily enrollment reports. So the state has enrollment numbers from a myriad of different places when they, um, factor in state aid to come up with what's their funding for enrollment.
Right, so right now, you got $507,000 in state aid, correct?
Yes.
Where is that all going in detail?
In detail, I could tell you right now, tuition, because your tuition's going up by 900,000, you got state aid of 500.
And that's where all of it is going?
Well, there's, every line in this budget has increased. Your tuition's gone up 32%, transportation's gone up about 20-some percent, salaries are going up 3.3%, healthcare's going up 9%, so every line item has seen an increase, which is why all of it got used up rather quickly. But the biggest, the biggest marker in this budget, which was unusual over all the other years, is tuition.
Okay, because of these additional students?
Correct, you've got more children, which is why you got more state aid.
Where is the, the detail of the budget? I mean, the real detail, not the one that you put out in the paper, because that's only highlights. Where can somebody look at the actual detail?
The line-by-line item copy of the budget, I have it right here, would you like to see it?
I'd like to see it. Can I take that home with me?
No, it's mine. But if you'd like a copy, I can make one available for you, and you can come pick it up.
That'd be great.
Wonderful. Come to the board office, I'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay, now, next question. You also have a surplus.
Yes, and that's been budgeted for tax relief, as I'm required. It has been budgeted as revenue.
As revenue?
Yes, that's what you do with your surplus.
Okay. Why not take some of the surplus, offset some of your costs?
I did, it's in the budget as revenue, along with the state aid. The full amount.
The full amount of your surplus, so at the end of this year, you will have no surplus left?
I will have the 2% I'm allowed to have by law. Everything else is in the budget as revenue. I'm required to have a minimum by law of $250,000 or 2% of my average expenses. We have the 2% of our average expenses. Everything else is in the budget as revenue.
Crazy. But I think seeing the fact that because you're over the 2% and it's not voted on by the general public, I think you folks have got a hell of a big obligation to really trim this thing down. 7% is too high, 4% is too high for this town. It should go down lower and maintain the cap. That cap was put in there for a general purpose. I'm telling you, council came in, and there was a lot of things that we had to cut. So those are the things you've got to look at. Because the people in this town, like you're saying, they're not all in the apartments, they're in the houses. And the people in the houses are the ones that are paying the taxes. The people in the apartments, yeah, they, they, some little bit amount, but not as much as the average homeowner in this town. And at, at that kind of a rate that you're putting in at 7 and 4%, it's going to kill some of these senior citizens. I'm one of them. Unfortunately, I can handle some of that, but there's a lot of people that can't. So what do you, what do you do then? You say, well, I'm sorry, you know, this is, you folks have an obligation to trim this thing down to the lowest possible amount, and I mean the lowest. Not just, oh, this is nice, we should have this, this is nice, we should have, no, no. That's not how you do it, and you say, what do we have to pay, and then work up from that. Am I making sense to you folks? I mean, I don't know. But that's something that you guys got to look at, because, like I said, for some reason, the public used to vote on the school budget every year. And there was a lot of times when the budget went down, and you had to go and trim it and do whatever you had to do. From what I understand now, the public doesn't vote for the budget. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the public does not have a say in what you guys are doing, because you're over the 2%, and that's when it would go to the public. Now, can you explain why?
With the correction, with the correction, I'd like to correct you right there. 2%, unless we get an automatic adjustment. So the, the Department of Education is allowing an adjustment to the 2% property tax cap because of our increased enrollment. There's a few exceptions in the law that allows you to go above 2%. One of them has to do with healthcare, and the other has to do with an increase in enrollment. So when we opened our budget software, um, it was calculated for us an automatic tax increase above the 2% to accommodate the increased enrollment, which is the same number, again, the number of children that they use to derive the increase in state aid.
So that's, that's the additional 5% that you're talking about?
Yes. And the state allows it because of, again, the children are here, so there's, the state recognized an increase in state aid for the additional children. But there's also a local fair share that the state is assuming is going to come along with that, because the state, as you know, doesn't pay dollar for dollar for any service. So we have to make up the difference, which is why they allow the enrollment adjustment, in a nutshell.
What can I say? In your hands, folks.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, yay. T.O.K., I sent it out later in the afternoon, you probably didn't see it. These are all the things we agreed to. And my check marks are that.